Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Andronico.
Present.
Counselor Kane.
Present.
Counselor Devine.
Present.
Counselor Harris.
Present.
Counselor Liang.
Present.
Counselor Mahoney.
Present.
Counselor McCarthy.
Present.
Counselor Phelan.
Present.
President DeBora.
Present.
Nine members.
We have nine members. We have a quorum. Please stand if you can. If we could get a moment of silence and please use it as you wish. Please turn to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please read the open meeting law.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions that be made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged impermissible.
Madam Clerk, first item on the agenda, please.
Number one, DeChristopheraro Early Learning Center update.
Okay, we have Director of Public Buildings, Paul Hines, or actually Commissioner. They wrote it wrong on the itinerary, so go with Commissioner.
To you again. Tonight, we have been asked to come and just before we start.
Just a quick overview, real quick.
Sorry, Mr. Hines, you were rolling right there. Thank you, Mr. President. No, just a mention to my colleagues. You know, I reached out and wanted to get the Learning Center on the agenda for the evening. I know we're very close on putting another jewel in the city of Quincy in regards to education. Very familiar with a school like this. My children have gone to South Shore Collaborative, and I know that the footprint there is so successful for those kids that go down there that it's just going to be a tremendous achievement for Quincy to have this in their backyard and be able to utilize this down the road. I know that the administration has been tackling this for a number of months. I think first realizing right off the bat that it was going to be a bigger hill to climb in regards to getting it right, which I think they have, in regards to the layout of the school, the rooms that take care of the kids with PT, OT, occupational therapy, bath facilities, et cetera. And it is a little different and unique than your regular school environment, but I think they've got a great handle on it. So it's great to have Mr. Hines here tonight, members of the school committee, Ms. Perkins, Mr. Mulvey, and Mr. LaRoche also, who will talk a little bit about it here tonight to just show us another positive for the city of Quincy. So I just wanted to, I know they just popped up on the agenda, but I wanted to make sure we got a good look at this as I knew it was getting close. Thank you.
Before we get started, Commissioner Hines, I'd also like to recognize as well as Superintendent Kevin Mulvey, Assistant Superintendent Erin Perkins, but also from the school committee, we have Vice Chair Frank Santoro and Catherine Hubie, one of the members of the school committee. With that, Commissioner Hines, you may now have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you very much, and thank you, councilors, and thank you, Counselor McCarthy, for having us. I suggested we be here. I'll begin with introductions of the team, myself, of course, and no Commissioner Hines. And we, of course, have the superintendent and the deputy superintendent. Brian LaRoche is next from the, and Tom Kirwin in the next row behind from PCA 360, our OPM firm. And we don't have here tonight representatives from Westling Architects, and I would be absolutely remiss if I did not call out and give kudos to them for the job that they did. This building is fantastic. It is beautiful. It's well-designed. It's going to be an amazing asset for us here. So I do want to acknowledge our sincere appreciation for them. Also speaking will be Eric Mason, the Director of Municipal Finance for the city. And that's it. Tom, you're not speaking, though, right? Good. The meeting will be shorter. Okay. I talked to most of the people here. You always say, "How do you do your job?" It's crazy, but I really do like my job, and this is one of the ones, I love my job because of this project. You know, many times we get to go in and swing hammers with the guys, or, you know, use my law degree and all this stuff in the background. This time on this project, we got to use our heart, and it's an amazing project that I'm just, for the rest of my life, I'll be appreciative of this opportunity and proud of what we've done. The space is amazing. It's nearly complete. The contractor is Colantonio Incorporated. They have been fantastic, and I mean it. I mean, we work with a lot of contractors, and they have just gone above and beyond. And I would acknowledge, actually, they've made a donation to their school as well. They are paying for the basketball equipment in the gymnasium, just because to get themselves in that same spirit. They do suggest a mid-October substantial completion date on the construction. That date triggers when the major construction is done and the cleanup is done, but there's still punchless items going on. And at the same time, the FFNE, furnitures, fixture, and equipment comes in, gets set up, gets placed in the appropriate rooms, the technology gets mounted. So that next phase, the FFNE, will begin mid-October. Coinciding with that substantial completion and the cleanup of the building, we are going to have a dedication ceremony. As we all know, it is the Dr. Rick DeChristopheraro Early Learning Center. And on Sunday, October 22, at 2:00 p.m., there is a dedication program, followed at 3:00 p.m. by a public open house for the citizens at large, prospective parents, current parents of children with autism who are maybe considering coming to, back to the city for the programming, or are new to the need for the programming. So that will be happening then. The building, as we know, is a renovation of what had been an office building in its prior life's factories. If you look at the building, it was somewhat sleepy on the exterior, and one of the things that Westling did is they really wanted to spark it and wake it up and make it look like a school for children. And they did a great job with that, with the colors and the different mediums on the outside. I did take a look at some of it. We toned down some of the colors. As I said, Hines came out of the closet and built us a rainbow. So we toned down the colors on the outside. You know, we have the sky, the sky blue, we have the ocean blue, we have the yellow of the sun, and there's graphics representing, you know, the different scenes in nature and is representative of the colors used inside for the neighborhoods on the interior to help the students to identify their area of the school. As Counselor McCarthy alluded to, we learned some things as we went along, and we developed some things, and we realized some things, because this is a unique school for us as a building. And, you know, talking with the experts, our own personal experiences, talking with the parents, we addressed a number of things that we might not otherwise have done. You know, mechanical noise can be very distracting to a student, particularly a child with autism. We made certain that there is no mechanicals in the ceiling of any classroom that can cause that type of a distraction. We learned things with COVID, and have, both for practical purposes, but also for the convenience and the comfort of the students and the teachers, there's a bathroom in every single classroom, a single occupant bathroom in every single classroom. There is a full-service kitchen, full food prep, because this is a 12-month-a-year program, and the Quincy Public Schools generally don't go 12 months. They do do food programming for the free meals during the summer course, but this is unique in the realm of cooking and what they present. The building is fully air-conditioned, as it will be the 12-month programming as well. One of the things we did as well, you know, we met code with elevators, but we added two additional elevators, the food service and the beautiful cafeteria on the second floor. So we do have a freight elevator for the kitchen, and we had an existing elevator, and we've added a third one in what we call Building A. So you may hear people talk to Building A and Building B. If you're looking at this building, or the complex, it's two buildings, if you're looking from Old Colony Avenue, the building on your left, kind of an angle to the street, is Building A. The building to your right, closer to St. Anne Road, is Building B. So with the elevator that we have for the food service, in the event that we have to expedite the evacuation of the building, we anticipate a number of people with mobility challenges and staff to help them. So the three elevators help us to do that in a more expedited way. The kitchen elevator can evacuate the second floor of Building B. The original elevator can evacuate the third floor of Building A and the gymnasium that's in Building B. The new elevator in Building A can evacuate the second floor of Building A. Of course, the first floors just go out the doors. So each area of the building will have a dedicated elevator to allow a more expedited evacuation of the building in an urgent manner when needed, and hopefully, you know, it would never be needed. I think I'll stop talking. You don't want to hear me anymore. I'll turn it over to the other ones. Brian LaRoche from PCA 360 will be taking you through the slide deck and the different elements of the building and speak to it in more detail. Followin' Brian will be Eric Mason. As I introduced him earlier, he will be speaking to the finances of the project, and then, of course, Erin Perkins and Kevin Mulvey on the programming and the use of the building. So with that, I'll turn it over, and I thank you.
Thank you, Paul. To the councilors, thank you very much for having us here tonight and happy to be here with you. So I'll give you an overview of the building and give you some images of where we are in the process. So as Paul explained, the building is sort of organized in two parts. The building on the left, which is at an angle, that's what we refer to as Building A. In the center, when it was, the building for Eastern Nazarene had an atrium, so in the construction team, we've been calling it the atrium, even though there's no more openings between the floors. But that's the reception area, the lobby of the school in the center, and then to the right is Building B. The building is 57,000 square feet. It has 30 classrooms in it, and it's three floors. On the second floor, you can see there's the classroom wing on the left. We have a center space is now a multipurpose room. The cafeteria is on the second floor, as well as some additional classrooms in Building B. And then on the third floor, it's not a full floor. The Building A wing is three stories with classrooms. We use the center, what used to be the atrium, we now repurpose it into a multipurpose room. We also have a gymnasium that is used on that level for gross motor activities. So here is the renderings of the project as it was originally designed, and then Friday I went to the building to take some pictures to show you how it's progressed. So you can see the dream is now becoming a reality. The project's really coming together. Landscaping has just begun this week. Right now, we're doing the finished coat of paint throughout the building. The last couple of areas are getting the floors and the gym and on the third floor. So we're really getting to the very end of the project and beginning the cleaning process and getting it ready for our inspections and turnover. Here's another view from 180 New York Campers Kinder House entrance. You can see the corner of the building of the 1908, I think, is the original Building A, which was the Necco, no, Johnson &amp; Johnson Candy Factory. And you can see that, and here's the reality of what it looks like. You can see the murals on the outside. They tie with some of the graphics and imagery on the inside of each of the academic neighborhoods. So a lot of the children are going to see some of the repeating graphics of where their home base is with the outside of the building as well. Here's a view at the rear of the building. Because of that center entrance, we have the benefit of two entries. The rear is going to be used for bus drop-off. The front is going to be used for parents to drop off. They both come into the center lobby area. You can see some of the graphics, which are near the playground. And here's the view of the building as it looks now. You can see, again, the image of what it was to what it is now. It's definitely coming together. Here's a view from St. Anne's Road, looking at the playground area. We did some work to reorganize the parking lot of Central Middle School to move that parking lot closer to the central school to make more room for the playground area at the back of 180. You can see, here's a picture of as the playground stands. This week, they'll be putting in the grass turf in the black areas, and the plant material is going to start to go in around the playground, too. So you're going to start to see that transformation. Here's some views of the interior of the school. This is a typical corridor. On the left are the support spaces for the classrooms, and then on the right are the classrooms. Here's a typical classroom. They're smaller size because the number of students per classroom are unique because of the school. They're a little bit smaller. So you can see they're all very similar. The colors change because of where you are in the building. Here's another classroom that's on the corner of Building A, looking out towards Camper Campus Kinder House. And then this is the third-floor atrium space. This is a multipurpose room that's going to be used for gross motor activities, getting the kids out of their classroom, and it's going to, you know, it's got this nice, tall, two-story volume, lots of light. So the spaces are pretty spectacular in the building. Here's the gymnasium. They're just putting the flooring down on Friday, when I was there. And as Paul mentioned, Colantonio, our contractors, donated the basketball hoops that are going to go in the space. So that's a sort of overview of the project where it stands. And then the project budget. Here is a breakdown of our total project budget, our soft costs, which include architecture, engineering, project management, the construction costs of $27 million, other project costs, and then we have furniture, fixture, and equipment, which is the, you know, computers and a lot of the specialized equipment that's going to go in the building, and then our contingencies, for a total of $35,810. And I'm going to turn it over. At this point, Eric Mason will present the rest of the finances to you on the project.
Good evening, council. So I think one of the natural questions comes up when we have this expanded services, expanded funding, and where do those extra funds come from? They came primarily from three sources. So we had city appropriations, cities ARPA and ESAR contributions, and then county ARPA. I want to make a little distinction on the nomenclature here, which is ESAR. ESAR is not an independent program under CARES and under ARPA. It's actually one bucket that got fed from both the CARES and the ARPA side. So when I say ARPA, some of that will be through the original 2020 appropriation of the CARES Act, and there will also be some contributions from the ARPA side into ESAR. But we're just going to talk about ESAR as one bucket, because it all has relatively similar restrictions and applications. So as the body's aware, that in 2020, there was an appropriation for the purchase and about a $1.5, $1.8 million build-out. Those are the initial dollars spent. We came back, the administration came back in 2021, requesting another $14 million bond, which at this point were about 40% of the way through the funding of the building. But then, as the scope began to evolve to serve more students, there was a decision to be made of where to use those funds. And under several provisions in ARPA, CARES, and ESAR, these types of facilities can be financed and used through the contributions from the federal government at this point. So that's when the city started deploying ARPA funding, and then subsequently used ESAR funding. And the last bridge of funding was actually awarded by the county under their allotment of ARPA from the federal government, and that's how we get to the $35.81 million. To kind of break this down, you can look at the Learning Center's amount allocated. You can see that it's primarily allocated from fiscal 2021 appropriation and then non-taxpayer funds from ARPA and ESAR. And we could further break that down into the amount of allocations, which is 56% of this project is a product of bonding and traditional taxpayer-funded financing, while the remaining amount is from non-city sources, which is the ARPA and the ESAR funds. And then finally, to kind of give an idea of the cost-benefit of this project, speaking with the school department, we were able to identify that roughly 50, maybe, I would say, a low underestimate that roughly 50 students will come back in district. From the lowest cost of out-of-district education, we see about $60,000 spent on tuition, another $20,000 spent on transportation. I will say that transportation per student annually is very low. It's about the lowest you'll see. It usually gets closer to 50,000 or 60,000. So we're looking at approximately $4 million just in district returns, and also, and this number naturally doesn't count for students who are coming up through the system who are not going to go out of district, which is an additional savings. And I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Mulvey.
Thank you, Mr. Mason, and good evening, everyone, and thank you for inviting us here tonight to present to you on such a great project. There are so many people to thank, and I want to just make sure I take this opportunity to do so, because this is really a game changer for our students with autism here in the Quincy Public Schools, as well as other students with similar disabilities who'll be taking advantage of this great school. So obviously, I want to make sure I thank the mayor and Dr. DeChristopheraro for their vision in the initial creation of the idea of exploring this opportunity for the school department. Obviously, I want to make sure I thank the school committee. I know that Mrs. Santoro and Mrs. Hubie are here today, but I want to make sure I thank all the school committee for their support of this very important program, of course, you, the city council, who voted to support the funding of this program. I want to make sure I thank Westling Architects. What a great partner. Westling Architects was and is for designing such a beautiful building, along with PCA 360, Brian LaRoche, and Tom Kirwin, so such a great team, as well as Paul Hines. Thank you, Paul, for all of your work on this. I also want to introduce to you our current Special Education Director, Julie Graham. Julie, thank you, who worked as well with Assistant Superintendent Erin Perkins, former Special Education Director, and really a visionary for this program. Erin worked tirelessly with the team as the former Special Education Director and now the Assistant Superintendent, to make sure that every single need that our students with autism and other disabilities would have was expressed in the building and design of this building. I'm on the board of the South Shore Educational Collaborative, and I know Mr. McCarthy had mentioned that earlier. That is the school where many of our students go. Many of our students are outplaced outside of Quincy because of their disabilities, particularly students with autism. And Quincy does a phenomenal job with regard to making sure that our schools in Quincy are community schools, building communities within each student's home district. One of the voids in that area was developing community for our students with special education, in particular, the area of students with autism and other serious disabilities that required us, because of the lack of resources in Quincy, to place students outside of Quincy, which prevents those students and families from developing the communities that other students have here in the Quincy Public Schools. This school is a game changer now, because we have the ability to bring community to those families and to those students, where we weren't able to do that in the past. Now all of our students in Quincy have the opportunity to become a part of their own school community, and certainly this school, the state-of-the-art school that it is, will allow that for our students with autism and other serious disabilities. And I can't be more proud of our city leadership, our school committee, the mayor, the city council, and the entire team for working collaboratively and putting in long days and long nights and making sure that every need is met for our students and that we give our students and families this opportunity. So with that, I will ask Erin Perkins to come to the podium, just to review with you some of the highlights of what we'll be offering our students in this school. And I do want to note that at our October 11 school committee meeting, we'll be doing another presentation for our students and families on the Learning Center and in-depth programmatic review. But for tonight, we wanted to just highlight for you the great opportunities that now exist for our students and families at the Rick DeChristopheraro Learning Center. So thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Mulvey. Thank you for having us here tonight. I would just echo what everyone said. This is probably the project that I am most proud of being part of and participating in, in my career in Quincy Public Schools. It's something that is extremely personal for me and for the families that I work with, and so we really appreciate you letting us be here tonight to share what we have done so far. So I'm just going to speak briefly about the design. So the focus of the design, when we initially developed this building, was on the idea of learning neighborhoods. So we would divide the areas of the building, basically based on age, and each area of the building, as Mr. LaRoche said, has a different theme. So the idea, when we were putting together the furniture and the technology and all of the things that go into making the school a great place, was that we would purchase and really stock the building with developmentally appropriate items for each grade level. So we have a pre-kindergarten and kindergarten learning neighborhood, and that will house our integrated pre-kindergarten classrooms, as well as our CARES classrooms. We also have a kindergarten-to-grade-two learning neighborhood, and that will be students ages about five to eight that would be participating in classrooms in those, in that neighborhood, and that would be CARES classrooms, which is what our programs are called for our students with autism. We have grades three to five learning neighborhood for those students, and that would be for students up from about eight until age 11. And we have a learning neighborhood for students in grades six to eight, which would be about 11 to, say, 14 or 15. We really paid a lot of attention, and Westling Architects was instrumental in this, in picking common colors. We wanted to make sure that the space was able to be a calming situation for our students and our staff, and that, you know, the neighborhoods would be differentiated by those colors. So you saw in some of those pictures that the colors change depending on the area that you're in. It's really amazing when you walk through it. It looks unbelievable. And that's one of the comments so far, you know, in anyone that's entered the building, even under construction, that the colors are just amazing. Soft tones, muted tones, dimmer lights in every classroom. I mean, it's these little things that don't seem, you know, huge to us, that make a huge difference in a learning atmosphere in a classroom for our students. So in addition to each of the neighborhoods, we have multiple therapy spaces. So we not only have therapy offices, but we also have areas for students to go for therapy. We have PT rooms, OT rooms, speech rooms. We have a sensory room, which is probably one of the rooms that you'll find me in on most days, but it is really an amazing room. There are two swings hanging from the ceiling. These things have not been installed yet, but they will be. Ball light tubes, soft furniture, just really amazing room. A calming room, if students need it, that will be filled with soft furniture. A gymnasium, as you saw, the multipurpose spaces, so those are really flexible spaces that can be used for therapy. It can be used, we will have themed materials out there, books, bookshelves. We can also use it as a library or a media space, which was actually feedback that we got from one of our parents. And a life skills classroom, which is absolutely amazing on the third floor. It's set up like a mock apartment, has washer, dryer, kitchen, so that we can really build life skills as we work on our students that are, you know, growing up with us, and then access to the common dining area. So just to show you a little bit what a classroom will look like, the furniture hasn't come in yet. We had staff participate in the ordering of the furniture. We met multiple times with staff to review furniture. We changed these layouts, I don't, maybe 20 times, 30 times, a lot, to make sure that it was exactly what we felt that the students needed and that the staff would want in their rooms. So this is a pre-kindergarten classroom. So you can see lots of different seating options, flexible seating options, tables that can push together or be broken apart, depending on what you're working on, storage items, obviously play items, which are very important to a pre-kindergarten classroom, things like kitchens, easels, blocks. All of those things are incorporated in here. This room is a CARES classroom for kindergarten to grade two. Again, very similar. Again, very similar. You see an easel, tables that can break apart. We did order all of the material that we ordered, as I said, as developmentally appropriate. So, the sizes vary depending on the room that you're in. So, we made sure that when we were designing the classroom for the kindergarten to grade two, that the items that we were purchasing were appropriate and big enough for those students. And we also have the flexible seating, you know, that you see on the mat there. There's different ways to sit within the classroom. And here is a grade three to five, so you can kind of see the progression in the pictures. You know, the furniture gets a little bit more older, you know, not as many toys and things like that. But this is a classroom that's set up similar style again. We really felt strongly we wanted the option for there to be small group or individual work. So, we, you know, we do a lot of discrete trials, individual ABA therapy within these classrooms, and so it's important that we had that option with our seating. And then for grades six to eight, similar setup. And again, you can see the high table with the high chairs there. So, we really considered the age of the student. We have a standing desk that you see in the middle of the classroom there. So, you know, again, carousels so that students can work independently when they need to, but that are easily removed when they don't. And I should also mention that the classrooms have interactive whiteboards, which is absolutely just amazing. iPads for communication devices. So, many of our students that we work with need other tools to be able to communicate. And so, iPads with things like ProLocoGo are crucial for the development of our students. And that is just a brief overview of the Learning Center.
I'd like to open up to the counselors. I'd like to recognize Counselor Devine.
I'd like to say thank you very much to everybody that came out tonight to talk about this. It's such an amazing thing, not just for the students, but for the parents to know that their kids aren't going to be getting on a bus and going 20 miles or somewhere else. So, first and foremost, that's exciting. I stopped in several times to check on the progress, see how it's going. Even outside, you talked highly about the colors, and then the simple designs, they're not sensory overloads, I'm sure. So, the detail or not detail that you put in is phenomenal. I just wanted to ask one question, maybe to Mr. Mason. It looks like we're going to be getting a lot of money back, and then will the students coming elsewhere will be paying? Will other towns be paying us?
That's certainly a model that can be adopted. There are plenty of municipalities who have done that, but I would actually defer to the school committee, sorry, the school offices on how that would work functionally. But yes, they can pay.
Sure. At this point now, it would take about just under, maybe over, eight years to pay for itself? Is that accurate? After we save money?
Yes, it depends on the ramp up of how many students come across and we get, how much tuition reimbursement we get there. Right now, if we have $4 million savings from students that don't have to go to different districts, I would say eight years is very conservative for what that would be.
So, I think that's extremely impressive, too, to have such an amazing facility, state-of-the-art, and have it paid for in eight years, maybe less. So, thank you very much for all your hard work.
Counselor? I'd like to recognize Counselor Yang.
Thank you, Mr. President. Eric, if you can just pop back up here. I was looking at the chart that was presented to us that gave the breakdown of the cost. And so, I'm just curious where it says that 44% came from the appropriations and the other 50 something percent here. Thank you. The other 56% came from non-city sources. When we were planning for this project, were we anticipating that we were going to get that 56%?
No, we weren't. That was part of the funding of the expansion of scope.
Gotcha. Okay, so, had we not, you know, needed to, or had we not known that the 56% was available, we would have kept the original scopes then, and that would have been covered under the 44% that we originally proposed?
I believe so. I would defer to the construction team on that, on how they would have scaled based on those financial constraints or the administration.
Okay. The reason why I'm asking is, I mean, I'm thrilled to see, I should step back and start there. I'm obviously thrilled for the center for reasons I'll get into later when I want to talk about the programming. But, you know, for me, I'm looking at this and thinking, when you start off with a project, of course, you want to nail the absolute final cost right before you move forward with it. So, then just seeing that there's going to be, you know, 56% of this project, you know, being used from other sources, it just makes me wonder, you know, what that sort of progress was with, okay, here's the original project, here's the original cost, now we have this other funding we can use, now we can expand services. If that's the case, okay, right, for this particular project. But if that's not the case, I want to understand just how we got to this breakout, and then just how that's going to inform future projects as well. Because we've talked about this before, right? I mean, time equals money, and if there's any delays, of course, that I know also adds to it. And then, of course, you know, changes in the economy will add to the price changes as well, which is why we built in the contingencies, right? But you and I have had conversations about, you know, moving forward with larger projects where we can maybe change the process and look at guaranteed maximum pricing for projects moving forward, and this is another example of why that's really relevant for me to think about with you and maybe with Paul moving forward. So, again, if I could just get an understanding of how we got to this split, again, what was that thought process with the cost and then the projected build-out?
Absolutely. I think just weighing on the financial side of it. The expenses and revenues don't exist in a vacuum. We had some unique opportunities under ARPA and ESTER that allowed the continued expansion. In economics, you have this thing called Say's Law, that supply creates its own demand. The supply of excess funding. I was able to address the demand we have for this educational service. From a tactile standpoint, I'll turn it over to Commissioner.
Thanks, Eric.
Thank you. What he said. We would have the project meetings, and as the need was realized to be bigger than what was originally presumed, and how to serve that class of students, the students with autism, and what would make this the best facility that we could to bring people out of district back and to keep rising students, younger students, rising up in Quincy and not have them go out initially. So, those numbers, the 50 students coming back, that's if only 50 come back who are out. That doesn't account for the students that are born in Quincy and rising up through the ranks who are going to need these services that will never go away, will never go out of district. So, as the need and as the need wanted, the desires of the school department on what they wanted to see in this facility, I kept going to the mayor, who was wholly supportive of this project at every step of the way, and said, "We'll do it." You know, he talked to Mr. Mason, he talked to the county officials, and as we grew and as we wanted more, he got more. So, it was, basically, they ran parallel of one another, the asks and then the supply of additional funding.
Okay, thank you. And I know that in the past, you and I have spoken about projects being on time, and for you, I know you're a stickler for making sure that that happens, and we have spoken as well about bringing on a project manager. I hope that that's helpful with expansion of projects like this, right? When the original scope is much smaller than, you know, the final product that comes out of it. And so, I know you're taking steps to address that when that comes up, and I have confidence that you're doing that with the expansion of scope on this as well. Eric, not for you to come back up, but just to, again, reiterate that on the financial side of things, I think this is, again, for me, bringing very front-of-mind a conversation about how we can better incorporate guaranteed maximum pricing into projects when we're looking at it up here when they're presented to us. So, thank you both for explaining that. On the programming side, I just want to move into our, just first of all, again, saying thank you profusely. I'm so excited about how thoughtful everyone has been in the planning of this process. You know, someone, Counselor McCarthy, I have someone very close to me in my family who grew up here in the city with severe developmental disabilities, was misdiagnosed, you know, over the years, from Down Syndrome to Kabuki Syndrome, and now more recently with autism, and she's non-verbal, and she's an adult now, so she wouldn't have been able to, you know, come to this program now anyways as an adult. But growing up, I mean, it would have been amazing, you know, for her to be here in this building, right? For her to be able to drive 10 minutes each day to this program versus now, even as an adult with severe autism, right? Being in the car 30 minutes each way has a severe impact on these folks who, you know, have other needs than we do. And so, to be able to offer this as a service in the city, I mean, wow. It just, I wish, again, you know, you maybe could expand it to include adult services, too. I would 1,000% make a pitch for that. But that leads me to just making an ask and a really serious, I guess, request to see if it's possible to coordinate the promotion of this program now and the promotion of this opportunity through some organizations in the community like Quincy Asian Resources and Boston Chinatown Neighborhood Center. Growing up, you know, even if my parents were either in Quincy in the programming for my sister, or even now, I'm not a professional in this by any means, and so trying to understand IEPs and then translate them from English, when I speak fluent English and I don't even understand that too well, right, to then Chinese to my parents, has been really difficult. And I'm just one family, right? So, I think to have such an amazing resource here is one thing, but let's just make sure that all families who live here will have access to this program. And so, I think if we can work with them, I'm more than happy to provide help and connections there. I know you all work with them already really, really well in the current school system. The other thing I will just add to that is if we could also make sure that there are live interpretation services, not just during the IEP programs, but throughout the entirety of the school programming, just because, again, during the day, if there's incidents, to communicate with parents. And then, just to make a plug as well, that we do have a language access program now that's fully funded through the city, and so certainly taking advantage of that if that's helpful as well. But again, I just, this is, I mean, just so absolutely incredible. And again, if you ever do want to expand it to include adult services, that would be amazing to be able to bring my sister there as opposed to driving her 30 minutes out for a program. It just, yeah, what an incredible resource. Can't wait to see it get opened, and yeah, excited to see the benefit that's added. So, thank you all for your hard work. Really do appreciate it.
I'd like to recognize Counselor Andronico.
Thank you. The school department team, I just want to say thank you for joining us tonight, and of course, my former members on the school committee, Mr. Santoro, thank you for joining us as well. During my time on the school committee, I was very proud to vote in favor of this. And one of the things that we talked about was the difference that that'll make, this will make, for our families who have to go out of district right now. And that's 50 students, that's 50 families who don't have to travel a long distance, who get to create their own school community, and I think that's something to be very, very proud of. And in particular, as the school committee knows, every year, the line I paid attention to the most was the out-of-district tuition line. And you never really know what that line is going to jump to year over year. I believe one year it jumped 1.2 million more than we had expected that it had. And so, when that bill comes through, you have to find sources to pay for it. So, this is an investment in Quincy's future in the long run. It will save Quincy money, and I think it's a great thing that we're able to offer these services in-house. And just talking about numbers a little bit, I know the administration, my colleagues, Mr. Walker, know that I always like to bring up ARPA. We've talked about it for a long time, and I've been critical in the past about the allocation of ARPA funds, but I think it's only right and fair that I also acknowledge when I believe that ARPA funds are being spent the right way. And this is one that I'm very proud of and appreciative that the administration did make using those particular funds. So, anyway, thank you very much.
I'd like to recognize Counselor Mahoney.
Thank you. So, I just want to ask one question. Mr. Mason, and this might be also a Mr. Hines question, too. So, when you say fiscal year 2020 appropriation for $1.7 million, what's that?
I forget the exact council order, but it included the purchase of the land. It was an $8.5 million total council order. So, the purchase of the land for approximately $6.8 million, I think it was $6.85 million.
So, we only spent 1.7, not the 1.8, the 8.5 that was approved?
No, so this doesn't include purchasing the land, because regardless of scope of project, the land would have still been purchased.
Okay. So, I would think that the purchase of the land, the whole, would be the total, part of the total cost of the Learning Center. Is that not included in your 35?
No, it's not. That was presented in previous presentations about the land.
Yeah. But when you're figuring out the per cost per student, you would want the whole cost from the purchase of the land to the building to, I would think, it's just, because it's an expense that was also included. I'm just, I would think, but. And then, on the other side, when you're talking about the ARPA, the ESTER, and the county ARPA funds, that 56% over, are you saying that we added that because we wanted more programming, or is it because the cost of the construction? Because from everything from 2020 on, the costs got, from every other project we've gone over because of the cost of, you know, doing construction just through COVID? Is that, or was it, you were adding more programming to it?
So, you are correct, Counselor. Costs went up during that supply chain issue, absolutely. But similar to the discussion with Counselor Yang, it was as more funds became available, it was the administration to continue to expand scope.
So, is there any way we could break that out to say, like, you know, because what we're saying is we approved $14 million, and then what was said to Counselor Yang was that this was to, whatever was asked for to get the program, so the building was set for kids, but then there's also the cost that went override because of the implications of COVID. So, you're kind of combining those two things. I think that's important to understand, what was the real overrun of the cost, so we can understand that you have the funds, it was built, but just for, you know, for financial purposes, breaking those out, that's hugely helpful, to be able to look back at a program like this that you're building out, because in a non-COVID world, which maybe we'll never be in for those costs, anything that we're looking at the fore to be able to break those two pieces out.
We can do estimators, we can use Federal Reserve database and calculate material costs. That's an increase. I believe it's about 9.6%. I'll throw it out of my head.
I would think that's something you would want to do just for transparency's sake. And then, also, when we went back to look at the, so what we're doing here is annual savings district return. When you presented this a long time ago to us, you were telling us that it would be, in this particular case, we're about $80,000 per student for those 50 students. And I think the first time you were presenting it, we were saying it's probably close to $120,000 per student. Is that just because the cost of the building went up? I mean, and it's not, again, just asking that question.
No, this is, the reason we use the 1620 is that was the lowest amount we could find for one student.
For the collaborative.
This is not the average. This would be the absolute lowest savings it could be.
But when you presented this previously to us, you had a different ratio built in that was $120,000 per student savings.
That's actually like the average that we do.
All right. And then, I think what we said that the first year out would be, this is PAC, when you first presented it to us, again, the first year, it would save about $350,000. Is that still the case, or do you think it's hard to say?
Now that it's scaled up, it's likely we could save more. I think they alt-estimate the per square footage energy consumption costs are going to be the same.
You did a big presentation for us last time. This is, you only given us four, it's just the apples-to-apples unit we're getting did this, and I had to go back and look at things to compare. It's usually helpful to have, like, what we set out scaled at the date that came before us, where we're at today with additional cost, and where we're at savings. That's not kind of following through, so it's two totally different presentations, and it's hard to follow. Again, this is by no means, this is just the way I look at numbers when you start a project that starts at X price, things change, you add that to it, transparency, then you, you know, you had a set price for savings per student, and now we have a different savings. It's just, it's hard to follow, and I'm just pointing that out. But again, you know, there's savings here, and I can appreciate where you're coming from here, but it's just hard for the general person to be able to follow. And with the additional fundings of ESTER and ARPA, that's fine, too. Can I just, thank you very much, Mr. Mason. Could I actually ask Ms. Perkins? So, I love your presentation, I love any time you come up, because you can feel it coming from your heart like this. And I know this, I've worked with you with special education for a long time, so I can feel the sensitivity about this. And Derek, when do you think it's going to open?
So, we are planning, we actually were meeting with staff today. We haven't given them an official date yet, but sometime after the first of the year.
And which students will go in first?
The pre-K.
So, delikia is somewhat snug.
Delikia, yep, will go first. We'll probably do like a, like, rolling, so we'll do delikia first. And then, there are some pre-K classes at Point Webster that will probably move over there.
Will that be hard for them to transition mid-year? I mean, that's my only concern, but if you're coming back after the holidays, maybe that might be.
We probably, I don't know, I don't think we'll be able to do it after Christmas break, so, like, immediately after, but we will try to work around a natural break. And we, you know, with the staff, we did talk about a really solid transition plan, so the staff will know as soon as, you know, we have, you know, determined the date with the construction and everything else, and when the furniture is here and the technology and all those pieces. And then, we will have a really solid plan, and we will be working over multiple weeks for the plan. I mean, I would anticipate it will probably take somewhere around, you know, six weeks in order to get them all moved over there.
So, sometime in the new year?
Yep, sometime in the new year.
And then, how many students will be in the building in total from those locations within Quincy Public Schools?
So, in total, we're shooting for 350 students. Initially, we'll move the pre-K, which is probably, you know, about 150, and then, you know, to 200 students, somewhere around there, and then we'll start at there. And then we'll start adding in, you know, the older CARES students.
Okay.
Those are the students that we probably will wait till the end of the year to move because those students are, you know, they're one of our most vulnerable populations. And so we want to make sure we have a smooth transition.
And how many students can this building hold in total?
I'm not sure what the total capacity is, but the total capacity, we've always been planning for around 350, 350.
So 350, so right now, you're saying that there'll be 350 students from Quincy Public Schools moving in at some point between now and-
I think that's like our end goal. So, you know, I mean, I think initially, we'll move the pre-K, which will be probably around 200. And then we'll start, you know, we'll move some of the CARES classes. We, it's going to be based on need.
Yep.
So, you know, it'll be based on the individual student. And so then we'll go from there. But we have room to be able to go up to 350.
And then how many students for, like, outside placement? When we talk about being able to charge from outside placement, how many seats do you think will be available for those students?
Well, I think, you know, I mean, we are going to be targeting about 50 students to bring back to the district. And then from there, we probably still will have some room if we wanted to tuition in students. So part of the initial application process to be funded as a public separate day school is you need to have a process for, you know, tuition, when, if you're going to tuition in from other districts. And we do, I mean, we've already been getting phone calls. So, I mean, I think right now, it is extremely difficult to place pretty much any student in an out-of-district placement. Places are full. COVID really did a number. There's huge waits for kids to get things that they need, like ABA services or placements. I mean, we have kids that have been, you know, some kids that have been waiting months for services. So-
Is that harder now because of COVID? Or is it because, since coming back from COVID, has it, have things changed? Or?
I think everything's changed. I think, you know, there's, you know, outside agencies don't have the staff, you know, people are struggling with staffing, schools are struggling with staffing, you know, I think all of those things play into it. And, you know, so I do think that, you know, not a lot of students are moving on out of placement. So therefore, it makes it very difficult for us to place students.
And there's more, there's more kids. And this is going to be, so when we, when you open, when you open, if it's next year, is it going right into a 12-month program? Or is that something that's been figured out yet?
We're still working on that. So we definitely will have, I think we'd love to start with a summer program. The summer program will be a little bit longer than what we typically have. So we typically have a five or a six-week program. We're modeling the program after the SoShore Collaborative, which is a little longer day and a couple more weeks. So there'll still be probably some break time in there, you know, for our, for staff that decide to work the program for the summer. But we do have the, the ability to have a 12-month program, if that's something that we decide to do in the future. And we're also working with, like Sarah Morrison from Quincy Aftercare and SoShore Autism, we're partnering with them. So we may also offer like other things that are not necessarily a summer program. You know, we, we did a whole camp with Sing, Explore, Create for our students with autism. We can bring things like that. And so they might, it might not be school per se, but we can offer other programming during those days.
So it's not necessarily the 350 students that might be from Quincy that will be going to school 12 months. The building will be open 12 months with different population potentially in the summer.
Yeah, it would definitely still will be focused on students with autism.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But it could be, they could be from another building for the summer. You know, some students will be the students that are there all year long. But I think, you know, one thing that we've heard from our families is the importance of, like on vacations or the breaks that happen through the school year, you know, a lot of our kids can go and do rec, you know, in the summer. Many of these students cannot do that. So to be able to have an option for our families, where students can go and do a vacation week program with appropriate staffing is absolutely, like someone said, a game changer for some of our families.
So one other question that I have, and I'm assuming this because I can't tell in the picture. So this is meant for all mobilities, right? So it's not, you have mobility, the classrooms are set up from all different mobilities.
Everything is handicap accessible, yeah?
And then K to, it goes K to eight. Where do the kids go? I mean, I'm assuming that it's going to ramp up as the years go on, but, and this could be eight years down the road that you have this issue. Where do the kids go when they go to high school?
So we, they could potentially go to North Quincy High School, where we have our Learning Center and CARES program.
Right.
We also definitely have been thinking that we have the option to potentially open a high school classroom, if that's appropriate. You know, I think we wanted to start with K to eight to get that under our belt. And then, you know, if that goes well, we potentially could then expand to a high school classroom. And to Counsel Liang's point, we absolutely have had people calling us about doing adult services as well, you know, maybe when the school day is over in that building. So I think there's the possibilities for servicing our community in terms of, you know, students or adults or people with disabilities is, I think, it's endless.
Like, I guess, I was just saying, the only concern is the building only has a capacity of 350. So already, you sound like it's going to be, you're going to be crowded pretty fast.
We're going to try, yeah. We're hoping, we're hoping, yeah.
Yeah, I can see, I can see that. I mean, that's what I see is in the sense of when you get to, my concern is when you get to that point, and the kids have had this, you know, complete care, and then they're moving on in the CARES program over at North Quincy, traditionally, because a lot of the kids are out of district, they usually stay out of district. And then when they, you're going to have a different problem and a different issue. But you'll be working towards solving that. You can never retire, Erin.
[laughing]
You'll be honing up on the next basis. All right. I really appreciate it. I guess the only other question that I had was for Mr. Heinz. I think I had heard, and I just, I guess, I'm just going to ask about the bathrooms, because I heard, like, the bathrooms went in, and then we had some hiccups. The bathrooms, I heard that the bathrooms had gone in, and there was, you needed to put more bathrooms in. What was going on with the bathrooms?
When-
I know, it's kind of, I just know, it's kind of, it's not, I'm not meaning to be funny, because it's just, you know, there was a lot of conversations about the bathrooms in this building.
Yes. And I started them, because I saw that as a huge expense. But I, they convinced me, and I changed my opinion on it.
What do you, clarify, because I don't know what you mean?
Well, I looked at it from budget. I'm like, okay, we're going to add a bathroom in every classroom. You just blew this up. You know what I mean?
That's part of that requirement for this kind of a special education building, though, right?
Well, correct. It's definitely on the higher end of preference. Is it absolutely mandatory? No. But the mayor kept saying, we're going to do the best one. And particularly, if you want to bring people back from other districts, you have to, you have to be better than where they already are. Because there is disruption to, disruption to the child with autism, to change programs, change routines. We understand that. We had to make it worth the while to come back. The bathrooms in the classroom, they felt was very, very strongly that that would help. It also, it's for the staff in that classroom. You know, you've got a higher adults-to-student ratio in this program between parents and teachers. But if you're not taking the kids down the hallway to the gang bathrooms, and you can go right there at the classroom, that keeps those added persons, added adults in the room longer.
Right. So what happened, though? Because I guess, what I heard was we didn't put, you had to go back and put more bathrooms in. Is that what happened? Or you didn't have enough bathrooms? You didn't plan for the bathrooms?
The building had sufficient bathrooms for the population, building code-wise. But the desire was to have them in the classrooms. So-
So you had to go back and plum the bathrooms?
We made the gang bathrooms smaller and distributed them into every classroom.
Okay.
And then nurses' office houses and things like that.
That was after you, after you did the plumbing and build-out, so you just had to go back and put more bathrooms in?
No, not after build-out, no. This was all on paper.
On paper, okay. All right. Thank you.
I know when the mayor approached me back in 2019, it was fall, and he came to me, and he said, we're going to, we're going to do this early childhood center, this learning, special education. I was very excited. There was a couple of counselors that are no longer here that were very influential as well. Brian Palmucci, Brad Crowell, Kirsten Hughes, myself, along with the counselors that are up here. And we came into fruition. And little did we know, COVID came in March of 2020, and it held up a lot of our stuff. Here we are coming into fruition tonight, hearing. I know we started off with 150, could possibly be 185 students. Tonight, I hear 350 students. That's almost double of what we were looking to house inside that, that special education center. That's all a win-win. I know that the team over here had worked on the Sterling, the Southwest Middle School. I see the team, Tom Irwin, Brian LaRoche. You guys did a fantastic job at that school. So looking at the renderings and looking at the school, the pictures, the photos, I'm looking forward to October 22nd. And then hearing about the transition for the students that come into this school and really save them on the travel time that they have to spend on a bus or another car, and the time they're spent away from their families as well. So having 50 of our children come back, and then doing it in segments to get, get up to that 350 mark would be fantastic. We're looking forward to it. I remember the progression over there. It was Dr. Richard DeChristopher was superintendent, deputy superintendent was Movi, special education director was Erin Purkington. So I see the progression. So, and here we are, some years later. Commissioner Heinz, we looking for January 2024 as an opening? Are we looking for December? Or can we get some kids before the break?
I often call it, you know, my department creates the stage that everybody else lives on. We'll have it done, you know. The substantial completion's been October. Clearly, by mid-November, punch list is done, the building is done. It's still setting up equipment and furniture and those things. So when it's actually populated and the program goes in, that's entirely up to the School Department. Eric, Eric, what the hell am I doing? Erin gave a great description of how they're developing that program at this time.
It's always our name, I swear. And as you see, is the $4,000, $4 million savings on the 50 students. On the other children, what are we looking for cost savings per student, do you think it would be for just bringing them into the, housing them from our Quincy Public School Systems into our, our new early, special education center?
I defer to Eric on that. But my understanding, this 50 is the most conservative estimate possible.
Okay.
And that's just bringing 50 back at the lowest tuition, when there's students at other programs in other places, other towns, that are significantly more expensive than what they cited here in these numbers. And then again, that's just 50 that come back. And it's our own students rising up that stay in Quincy. The savings would be massive.
Lastly, with the renderings, I saw some of the photos, the shade umbrellas that you used. How many shade umbrellas do you have outside for the playground? I've been trying to get those for the recreations and the parks. I've been pushing our commissioner. And did you get any grant funding for those?
No. There are two playgrounds for the school, for the two different age groups. And there's a shade structure for each of the playgrounds. And you can see at the far ends, the one on your immediate left, and then on the far end, you'll see another one there. And then each of the play structures themselves have canopies on them.
Thank you for considering that. You know, it gets really hot out there in certain, I mean, as you know, it's going to be 84 degrees tomorrow.
Right.
Imagine that? It's been raining all this time. It's going to be nice the next couple of days. So it could get hot, and the sun could be coming down. So I thank you for the consideration of putting those in. Thank you.
Yeah, well, Commissioner Heinz was mentioning to me, you can see there's a tree at the far end. That'll provide some shading to the far end, too. It's a very old oak tree.
That's great.
It's about a 20-inch caliper. So that's been saved. So that'll help.
Thank you. I would also like to recognize Counselor Harris, if I could.
Yes, thank you. I just want to applaud everybody for their hard work and diligence on this. It's fantastic. I know a few folks that their children were traveling, both two children were traveling out to Peabody every day. And I've done, I did that commute for about two years during the big dig. And I can't even imagine what it was like for these kids, having to be picked up, dropped off. So it's, it's a win-win situation. And again, I just wanted to thank you. Thanks.
I thank you guys for your time for coming in tonight and giving us an update. Thank you, Counsel McCaffrey. We will hopefully, we'll get some good news when it's all running and open. And you guys can come back here and talk about the good stories. Thank you so much, everyone. Madam Clerk, next item on the agenda, please.
Number two, 2023-01, I'm sorry, excuse me, 100, resolve reinstatement of the Quarry Hills Advisory Committee.
Yes, I'd like to recognize Counsel Mahoney.
So this is just to reinstate. As we know, Quarry Hills has pulled the 99-year lease from our docket. And a lot of the work that we were doing in committee came around some of the things for the 99-year lease. We still have the 50-year lease that's in play. So what I'd like to do is make a formal request to have the City Council have, by the end of 2023, December 18th, 2023, for the administration to establish the QHAC, which is the Quincy Hills Advisory Committee. The updated committee should include at least four members of the Quarry Hill Citizens Advocates. They did a tremendous amount of work educating the general public on the 99-year lease. And it's important that we have people on the advisory committee that's going to really look at the things that need to be looked at, and be able to advise, advise the administration as well as the City Council. And so people from the advisory committee, people from the Quarry Hills Association, and representatives from the City Council, as well as the mayor's office and the Park Department. The original plan for that, we were told when it was being presented to us, that it was really just about dirt, moving the dirt, and how much dust that was happening up there. But it really, it was really in the, in the lease itself, it was very clear that this advisory committee was more, was for financial, financial oversight and to really be looking at some of the work that's being done there, operationals, plan reviews. And we haven't had one in establishment for quite some time. So I'm just looking for this to be done before the end of the year, so that we can make sure that we're paying attention to that 50-year lease, and when and if something else would be come back before the council would be better prepared to be able to discuss those things. If we could refer that to oversight.
So I get a motion made by Counsel Mahoney to refer this into oversight as well as approved as well? Approval and put in oversight? Okay. Do I have a second? Seconded by Counsel Liang on the motion, if you'd like to speak. I'd like to recognize Counselor Harris.
Thank you. I'd like to thank Counsel Mahoney for bringing this up in front of us tonight. As I, as I said, on the night of the public hearing, I believe it was last, last spring, on the 99-year lease discussion, which, which, which obviously has been withdrawn, I was more than disappointed of the absence of the advisory committee. And I made it clear, you can just see that on, if you go online and see that meeting. I wanted to be, I wanted it that evening, I stated I wanted it to be reestablished. I made it clear that evening. I was first made aware of this when I met with the Quarry Hills Citizens Group on a Saturday morning in one of the residence in Squanum. And in fact, we sat, sat together in that, in that parlor to hear their concerns. I look forward to seeing, I look forward to seeing the advisory committee be put back into place, like I said, the evening of the public hearing. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other counselors? Yes, I just want to thank Counsel Mahoney for bringing this forward. I did spend the afternoon, morning-ish, with Counselor Harris in Squanum. I think it was Maureen's house, I believe so. Michael Maureen. So thank you so much. You know, really, at the end of the day, I received plenty of emails and letters from a lot of your folks here sitting in here tonight. And we're looking forward to having more discussions about this. We'll put this into committee. But I thank you for reaching out. And I got all of your emails and a few phone calls and a few letters I have here as well. So with that, Counsel Mahoney made the motion to put it into oversight, oversight? We'll put it into oversight and approval, seconded by Counsel Liang. All those in favor say aye? Any opposed? The ayes have it. That motion carries, it's going to go into oversight, and it is approved. Next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Number three, 2023-10.
I'd like to recognize Counselor Andronico.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. You know, over the summer and this fall, Counsel Edvine and I have chatted a little bit about the interest we've seen in our wards for the permitting of potential retail marijuana facilities. And, you know, just in our discussions, we've noticed that there seems to be a disproportionate amount of interest in just our two particular areas. And one of the drivers behind that could be related to how our zoning ordinance for the siting of these facilities is set up, where by right, there are only a select few areas within the city that you can actually place these facilities. The Ford Shipyard being one, and of course, out in West Quincy by Quarry Hills itself. So with that said, we were hoping to pass this resolve to have the Planning Department, Planning Board, Inspection Services include as part of their overall review of our zoning code that we had passed earlier this year, just reexamine what we have in place for the establishment of retail marijuana shops. And I think, just like you wouldn't want all of our liquor stores to be in one neighborhood in all of Quincy, I don't necessarily think it's right that all of the retail marijuana facilities also be- facilities also be located in just one area of the city or another. So I appreciate Counselor Devine working on this alongside me. And I'd like to make a motion to approve and to place into ordinance.
Okay, we motion made by Counselor Andronico to approve and putting into ordinance and also advertise. I'd like seconded by Counselor Devine on the motion. Any other counselors? Okay, this one, we're going to need a roll call on this. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Andronico.
Yes.
Counselor Kane.
Yes.
Counselor Devine.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney. Counselor McCarthy. Counselor Phelan.
Yes.
President de Bono.
Yes.
Eight members.
Eight members in the affirmative. Motion carries and it also is put into the ordinance committee and also advertised. Madam Clerk, next item on the agenda, please.
Number four, 2023 1-0-2, a gift for $10,000 from the Coquelin.
Motion to approve made by Counselor Kane. Seconded by Counselor Andronico. A discussion on the motion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Andronico.
Yes.
Counselor Kane.
Yes.
Counselor Devine.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Mahoney.
Yes.
Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor Phelan.
Yes.
President de Bono.
Yes.
Eight members.
Eight members in the affirmative. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Number five, 2023.
Motion to approve made by Counselor Kane.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Andronico. A discussion on the motion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Andronico.
Yes.
Counselor Kane.
Yes.
Counselor Devine.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang. Counselor Mahoney. Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor Phelan.
Yes.
President de Bono.
Yes.
Seven members.
Seven members in the affirmative. Motion carries. I believe that is it for our agenda items tonight. Is that correct, Madam Clerk?
It is.
Okay. Approval of previous meeting minutes, September 18th, 2023. Motion to approve made by Counselor Kane, seconded by Counselor McCarthy. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Communication and reports from the mayor, other city officers and city boards. Madam Clerk, do we have any utilities or traffics?
Yes, thank you. Utility request to refer to Public Works for scheduling and advertising. Grant a location Mass Electric Horizon for 38 Parker Street. And we do have some traffic requests to report, refer to ordinance committee for advertising. Ward one, Counselor McCarthy. Remove handicap parking at 22 Woodwood Ave. Ward two, Counselor Andronico. Add four-way stop sign on Endicott Street at Bradford Street. Ward three, Counselor Kane, add a stop sign on Sherman Street at Edward Ave. Ward five, Counselor Phelan. Remove handicap parking at 65 Davis Street. Ward six, Counselor Harris, add a four-way stop sign on Hollis Ave at Newbury Ave. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Any other counselors for communication reports from mayor, city officers and city boards? Unfinished business in preceding meeting. Reports of committees. Presentation of petitions, memorials and remonstrance. I'd like to recognize Counselor Harris. Go right ahead.
It's with more than a heavy heart, um, a few days ago. And I, I will give a better presentation, uh, next meeting. There's a lot of us that are very much still in, very much still in shock. A, a member of the community, uh, uh, in Squanum and across the city, uh, uh, he was really, he was really a good guy. Ralph Ames passed away unexpectedly and, um, the services just was announced like today, very late. And I, I don't have, I know that it's Friday. I believe it's the usual hours at Cohane's and, and the service on Saturday. I'm sorry, we did something with our phones and I, I couldn't get the information and I was running late. But, uh, he was, he was a good friend to me. He was a good friend to a lot of people. He was an icon, actually. And, uh, uh, his wife Sheila and his, and his, his kids, I just, I'll do a better job next, next week talking about it. But just to make sure it's out there that some folks might not know and probably knew him and live on other parts of the city that, you know, uh, there are people that are just finding out now. It's, it was that sudden and unexpected. So, um, I appreciate that. I think, I think anybody who, who, um, any, any of the Pauls that went through Squanum